Can you get that?
Yeah.
We get a motion to return to open sessions. So, move to the second.
Second.
Uh, mic pick, roll please. Uh, I, Brent.
Aye.
Marcia.
Aye.
Mike Burdick.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
God.
Aye.
Sir.
Aye.
Uh, I'd like to welcome everybody to the IBC, uh, school board meeting on, uh, July sixteenth here. Um, if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, first up, we'll move on to the informational discussion items. Uh, Dr. Allison.
Okay. Uh, first, just kind of wanted to make sure everyone was aware that we unfortunately canceled all three of the graduation ceremonies. The high school, children's college, junior high in Mossfield. Basically, obviously, they could not be out inside. Limited us to an outside, uh, location. And even then, trying to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements and capacities of the football field. That made it too difficult for us to be able to get, get everything to do, to work following the period count guideline. So, uh, we did cancel those events. The high school will do their virtual, uh, graduation. That will be shared with everyone Friday, uh, uh, July thirty-first, so, um, trying to go through that. We did do the high school kind of that bit of a drive-through situation. We had them all back on campus so that they could, uh, get pictures professionally done with their caps and gowns. And so that will be a part of that. We had just about all of our, uh, ten of our students who did not return, uh, for that. So, we will get, uh, those will be part of the ceremony for the high school. And then, uh, junior high in Mossfield, or CEC in Mossfield, looking at kind of how they're going to do theirs. Uh, with that, understanding that there's going to be some form of, uh, kind of welcome back or congratulation event to have both of those schools, uh, for their students that just left at eight thirty. So, uh, also, the prom is also part of that. And really, just again, capacities and being able to do those things just did not make it work. Uh, we originally were at the civic center and they were certainly, uh, very certain in how they were going to do their event. So, we, unfortunately, that was scheduled for August sixth, um, and so it was unfortunately canceled as well. Just a reminder, student registration is going on, so we, uh, really do need all our parents to complete their registration, uh, online using. Uh, I don't think it's on. Sorry about that. Uh, turn our audio team on, Allison and Buzzard. So, sorry, again, registration is still open, uh, for all of our students. And so we really do need, uh, everyone to get online and make sure that they're registering, uh, for, uh, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. And then, kind of that last piece for information discussion is really where we are, like, school year planning. Mr. Buzzard, if you want to kind of dim those little lights. Sorry. Is this microphone working? Hello. Okay, so. So, really, looking at, uh, the data, this is, the first part of this is going to be, uh, from the surveys from the parents and the, the teachers. Uh, they both received, um, surveys June thirtieth. Uh, those were available to be able to, to kind of start. So, the first one, this is one of the, really, the teachers, uh, survey, one of their responses. "I have so many questions, but mostly one voice that I worry about going back to school in any capacity at this point in time. Going every day would be much less stressful for families, which is why I selected that option. But I do fear for my own health as well as the health of my family and others." And I think, to me, that's, you know, really where we are. You know, there's not any of us that think this is a great situation. Uh, I think all of us will say, of the choices that we have, this is what we believe to be right now the best option. But within that is certainly a concern for the health and safety of all of our students and all of our staff. And so this is obviously kind of indicative of that. When we start talking about those requirements, I've shared this a couple times with parents and with, uh, our staff, but this is the actual document, the guidance that comes from the Illinois State Board of Education, the Department of Public Health, which obviously the Board of Education is our governing body. And so, um, this is one where, uh, what they are showing us is the requirements to which we are required to follow. Through that document, there are really kind of two main themes. One, they are, we are encouraged to provide completely in-person instruction for all students in phase four. So, that is certainly our goal. Second thing, that we want to continue to communicate and do that. So, throughout this process, we've certainly, uh, hopefully surveyed our parents to get a lot of information. Uh, we did early in June, we've done it throughout the process, and then obviously that last one, June thirtieth as well. And really, these are the five requirements that derive everything that the state board has established with Department of Public Health, and then we are then required to follow. First one, require use of appropriate personal protective equipment, including face coverages. So, obviously, that is one that we knew was probably going to be a part of this. Um, obviously, not everyone in favor of that, but, uh, that is what we are required to follow. Prohibit more than fifty individuals from gathering in one space. So, that is one that we are, is a challenge for us. Uh, when you look at the commons outside, knowing that that's where we do lunch for the high school, obviously, we have one hundred and fifty students in there at one time. So, trying to make sure that we can work through that is a challenge. Require that schools conduct symptom screens and temperature checks, or require that individuals self-certify that they are free of symptoms before entering school buildings. Again, this is a real challenge when in a district of two thousand students to be able to figure out how we're going to be able to get all of that accomplished. But that is what we are required to do. Require an increase in school-wide cleaning and disinfection. Obviously, something that we are all aware of and know that we, we certainly need to do everything we can to, to keep everything clean and safe for our students and staff. And then that last one, which is actually number three on the original list, is require social distancing be observed as much as possible. And really, that's the one that kind of was a little bit of a change from what we anticipated, in that it said that those four words, "as much as possible." Very much, we, I was under the assumption personally that it was just going to be social distancing is required. That six feet number was going to be what we were going to have to do. But as we've talked with the state board, as they've done their informational settings, that "as much as possible" gives us a little bit of leniency. So, really, what that ended up going to, for us, was really asking that question. And that's where that June thirtieth survey was. For our parents and for our staff, "Do you believe social distancing with students at least three feet apart wearing required PPE face mask in classrooms in a traditional daily schedule is adequate? Or do you prefer we implement six feet of social distancing with required PPE face mask in classrooms and following A V schedule, attend Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursdays, what we discussed with our students?" And really, as we kind of talk about communications, you know, how do, what do our parents feel about that? I mean, that's really what, at the heart of what we were trying to find out, June thirtieth. From that, we received one thousand six responses. You know, it's hard to tell with a little over two thousand students. Um, and we certainly didn't get a response from every family. We asked for every student. Uh, some of our parents responded a couple extra times, trying to get theirs in. So, it's not perfect, but, uh, that's still a very good return rate for us. You know, and that fifty percent is, is very positive. With that, and to kind of see what the breakdown is, uh, very, very much representative of our schools and the size of those buildings. High school obviously being the largest, thirty-four percent, uh, that's where our largest population is. So, uh, that's a positive for us, actually, thirty-four percent. If you think about, uh, six hundred students roughly in high school, that's thirty-four percent is, is a, is a really good number, um, compared to the district size. So, that's, that's a positive. Uh, in Mossfield, obviously, our next largest building in total population, uh, twenty-nine percent in the CEC itself. So, uh, it really worked the way it would, you would want it to be. How does that end up? Well, as of when I closed this or took this data, um, which was Wednesday, today is this week, seventy-one point five percent of all of those respondents, which represents seven hundred and nineteen students, believe that social distancing with students at least three feet apart wearing required PPE classrooms with all students returning to school. So, really looking at that five-day schedule was really what we, the parents, uh, the majority of them feel. See that twenty percent, twenty-one percent, two hundred and nine students represented, um, their parents felt that the A V schedule with additional social distancing was appropriate. And then, that third group is also, I think, a really interesting one. Seventy-eight students represented, and basically their parents saying, you know, we, we would prefer not, we would continue, we would rather continue with a four-year-old program. And so we'll kind of talk about that too. But, um, so that's kind of the breakdown of, of where our parents were. Same situation, the summary result was also Tuesday when I worked on it. Hundred and fifty staff members. Work location, obviously, kind of still filters out the same. Majority of those staff, hundred and twenty-four teachers participated in the survey. On a normal year, we'll have about a hundred and fifty teachers. Uh, right now, that's a little bit different because we have some new staff who weren't, uh, obviously there. We've lost some staff that weren't, that, you know, retired and left other places. So, this is really a pretty good number for our teachers, and the twenty-six support staff members as well. And again, what do you believe, uh, is appropriate for us to follow? Uh, this one was really just two options, social distancing at least six feet. And our staff is at sixty-seven point three percent. That's a hundred, hundred and one staff numbers represented. If you break that out just for our teachers, uh, there were a hundred and twenty-four, as I said, who took the survey. Eighty-five of those teachers felt that the reduced social distancing was appropriate. Thirty-one percent, um, felt that we should do the A V schedule with, uh, really half the students and then be able to do the six feet of social distancing. The second part of the survey was questions. Uh, we know there are lots of questions. Really, as we kind of go forward, um, what we really wanted, kind of had the special meeting tonight was, we wanted to let our parents know if we're looking at an A V or if we were going to be going five days a week. We know that for our parents that need childcare, that's a huge difference. And being able to help our families prepare as it's, you know, July sixteenth today, knowing that we're going to start school, um, August, basically, twelfth, we wanted to be able to give them as much time, especially if we're doing the A V. So, um, this, some of the questions, we're not going to, I'm going to touch on a little bit. I'm not going to go through every one of these, try to group them into some categories, uh, just to be able to hit them. Uh, but really, when we have the board meeting on the twenty-eighth, um, less than two weeks, really our plan at that point will be presented and really hit a lot of those very, um, specific requirements and how we're going to handle some of those things. This one, you can see, one of the first questions that came up is dealing with A V and siblings. And that was something we were going to work on. We're not going to talk about the A V situation since we're really looking at the recommendation for a five-day. So, that takes us kind of the next one. Uh, Mr. Buzzard is working with Atco, who's our, um, contracted, uh, cleaning service and our maintenance staff, and they're doing, you know, everything we can, um, to get everything ready for the cleaning schedule and how we're going to improve that and continue that. Uh, one of the things that's kind of a, you know, seems like maybe this minor thing, but is a pretty significant one in my opinion, is shifting some of our night staff to the day staff. So, we will have more cleaning staff on-site every day, doing those really areas that get hit more by our students and staff, you know, hitting the restroom, sitting in that, you know, door hanging, old city, at C E C, the stairwell. Some of those things, trying to be able to do as much as we can with that. So, that's one of the pieces that we'll talk more about, uh, really, on the twenty-eighth and what that looks like. When we look at all of these, uh, obviously, the biggest, one of the biggest challenge areas for us are those big areas that we're used to having, the ability to have a lot of kids. Lunch is one of those. So, really, what we wanted to be able to do tonight was give our principals some time for the twenty-eighth to really figure out, are they planning for A V or are they planning for all of our kids coming in? And so our principals, you know, obviously, had a few days to kind of work on this. But we're really looking at how we provide lunch to two hundred students, where, uh, fifty in a spot. So, um, we're, we'll be able to do some of those, we think, in all of our buildings. It's going to look different. We're going to have to spread it out, obviously, to give, to limit the numbers. Um, but with additional locations, we'll be able to do that. So, uh, high school, for example, might be commons, the balconies, and, and we've kind of limited, um, outside eating last couple of years of high school. That may be, you know, something that we go to, obviously, with our high school kids too. South, looking at using the gym, using some of the hallways realistically, to try to spread out our kids and keep them in different spaces. So, it's one that we think is doable. It's a challenge though, and they're working on all of those pieces, and that's going to check up their schedules and other things. Buses, transportation, uh, the guidance document, we can have fifty students in a bus, or fifty individuals. That's, I mean, that's considered by the state board as a space. So, we are looking at, um, our routes, and that's one of those areas where realistically we need some help. We need some help from our parents because for us to split routes, we don't have drivers to do that. We don't have monitors to do that. So, um, that's one where we, we're going to ask our parents to say, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, but if you have the ability to bring your student and pick them up, um, turn up from school, please, you know, help us with that. So, that's one that we're, we're looking at with transportation. Monitoring the hallways, you know, all of us know. I, I have three boys. Telling them to stay away from each other, keep their hands off each other is a challenge. And then to say, beyond that, we really want you to maintain your social distancing. We know that's a challenge, but that's, that's part of what we're going to have to do. And so we will continue, uh, and, and we're going to be another area that we may send out and say, hey, we, we could, we could use some assistance during lunches and during some other areas, if, if your parents have some time, uh, that they'd be able to pay you. We'll be paying our, our per-time play people and, and try to get some more help because we're going to need it. Special area, how does that work? And really, we're looking at, uh, physical education, you kind of see that recess, those music and arts. And really, this is one where I think as, as a district, we very much value those areas. You can see, if you've seen, and I'm sure there are other districts around us that are, you know, really saying, we're going to, we're going to hand our kids a lunch as they leave at twelve-thirty and they're down for the afternoon. I will tell you today that our principals are working very hard to try to keep as normal a schedule for our kids as we can. So, we are going to try to do everything we can to offer band, music, general music in the elementary, art, uh, library time. I mean, it may not be going to the library to get it, we may have the libraries go in, but trying to make sure that we can do those things.
Awesome.
Try to be able to do as much as we can P E. Trey is here. But trying to do as much as we can because we know that's, that's part of what we do, uh, as a district that provides, you know, a quality. So, looking at those areas, so. But that is our goal right now. Uh, we hope, uh, we will be able to tell you on the twenty-eighth, really, what that looks like. What is our dismissal time? What is our arrival time? Uh, right now, we are working on trying to make it as consistent as it can. So, that's in all of our buildings, what we are working on, and hopefully, we're able to make that work. Um, obviously, from parents' concern, and we see it on teachers too, is that enforcement, uh, of the policies. Those, those five pieces that we have that are there, um, that masks are required, that, that's a, becomes a safety issue for us. And so, um, if you're choosing not to wear a mask, you know, that's a choice that we, we, you know, you can, you can't be part in the school building about it. So, uh, that's one of the. So that's one of those we're going to have to, have to address and deal with. Oh, preschool program. I, I really think one of the biggest challenges that we are seeing is with Bright Futures, with preschool. I mean, those programs are play-based programs. Bright Futures is really struggling with, how do you do that with three- and four-year-olds? And who, you know, sort of say, you can wear a mask, and then on top of that, try to keep your social distance, and, and, I mean, they need to learn the lessons of sharing. So that's a huge challenge for us. So we're, we're, Bright Futures is working through that, our teachers are working through that. At this point, we are really planning to have our preschool program at the high school and really just trying to figure out how that's going to work is, it's going to be, going to continue to be a challenge. But that program really is a benefit for both our high school students who are kind of early childhood educators, hopefully, and then the preschool students that they work with. Kind of see pre-K, sharing, obviously, sharing is something we're going to try to, we're going to try to avoid. We're cleanliness safe, so safety is maybe to do that. We know wearing a mask all day, I'm not a fan of it. I have trouble going right now, it's like three hours is about my most. So that's something I am going to continue to work with to be able to do that. We know that's difficult for kids, they're kind of toxic, suck this thing in, it's like, oh, it's miserable. But it's, unfortunately, it's needed to be normal. Students medically unable to wear masks, we know we have some students that aren't in that group, who have pre-existing medical conditions that they're going to be able to, they're going to have to do something else. That's one we're still working through and hoping that we get more guidance in the next few weeks. Right now, we don't have a whole lot. Drivers' education, as hopefully you may know, that is back up and running and really as normal as possible. The car gets cleaned between every shift of students, that everyone's wearing masks and they're continuing along with what they're doing. So in regards to this, obviously, parents wanted, it came up quite a bit, but ironically, it's very important to all of our high school kids who are in that phase, getting ready for that. It's up and running and actually will be very much on schedule. We've extended cars and driving time over the summer so that we will be back on track even though we haven't, weren't able to drive this spring. Remote learning options. This is one that, we know we have some parents, we talked about that in the survey, that if they really feel, we feel as a parent, that's not, that's not appropriate for your kids, kiddos to be in school, then we do have an online option that you'll be able to do. We, we've used, purchased two programs, one we've used some before, which is Ingenuity, and that will be kind of our six-to-two platform. And that really allows us to do a variety of courses. And the other part that we're going to do with our teachers is they're doing, obviously, training with that, but then having that ready to go so that in the event, we get another Friday meeting to say, you're not coming back on Monday, that our teachers and our students are going to be familiar with that program and that platform and be able to continue on with the coursework. So Ingenuity will be six-to-two, and then K five is Freckle. And it's more of a game-based looking platform for younger kids, but very similar as well. It still has kind of grade-level courses. So all tied to the learning standards. So in the event we go to remote learning, again, it won't be the choice board situation. It'll be, this is what we do. The state, if you look at the guidance document, one of the things that's a pretty significant change is that we're required to be five hours now of instruction. That was obviously not the case in this spring. So we've got to continue to work on that. So those options will be there. We will be sending that information out so that we know and parents can plan really kind of that week of, that next board meeting so that we'll be able to make that decision if the online learning option is for you, is what you want for your kids. And we'll be able to get started with that and be able to move as school begins. And I believe that next one is the same with those. And really, you know, that, that wearing a mask, we know is going to be a challenge. We know kids are going to need a break. We're going to take, perhaps take kids outside, get some, get some breaks, but while in the building, we've got to wear a mask, we've got to do the best we can. Staff questions? What are we going to do when someone shows symptoms? And realistically, we know that those symptoms are pretty similar to what we've seen in the past. So at the very basic level, it's going to be the same, that we're going to send them to the office. This is an area that we know in the district, we have, really, we have one nurse we may need to look at, how can we get more help in that regard? Because we know this is going to be a bigger issue and we've got to do all of those. What happens when someone tests positive? This is one for us, when that occurs, obviously, Department of Health gets involved and they're going to do their contact tracing. And then this, kind of as those pieces get through there, you'll see some of those questions of, you know, the fourteen-day quarantine, who makes that decision? That will be the health department. And based on, you know, what they consider to be that close contact with that individual. And so the reality for us may be that we have a teacher who unfortunately is test positive, they know they're going to be out for fourteen days. We also know our sub pool is very, very shallow, we don't have many subs. So the potential exists, tell all parents right now, anyone that's watching, that we may have a classroom that gets closed because we don't have anyone to offer that class. Those students then go online to the remote learning option and to be able to do that. Is that the best situation? No, we know it's not, but we've got to, we've got to do with, deal with what we can to hopefully make everyone healthy and, and keep everyone safe. So that is not something that we will do, we'll be working with Department of Health as that occurs until we get those pieces. Social emotional needs, and I think this is going to be something that affects all of us, I mean, there's no doubt. Our teachers, from that first slide, our teachers are nervous about this. Their social emotional needs, we know our kids have not been in school since March sixteenth. I mean, that is a long time. As parents, you know that, we know that. It's going to be a challenge for everyone. We're going to have to do the best we can and, and continue to provide as much support as we can for all of our kids. Again, teachers wanting, you know, are we going to get P E music, art, library? And again, we're going to do everything we can to be as normal as we can. At this point, we're not, we, we're not proposing any schedule change on a daily basis. That will be something that will be part of our meeting on the twenty-eighth. But we are, our goal is to do as much of a normal day as we can. Teachers, obviously, again, talk about the mask piece and be able to do that. Enforcing that, the I Ds, you certainly may know, kids wearing masks, I Ds are going to become more important, that's certainly important. And then the teachers know, you know, substitutes, how does that work? What does that happen? It's, it's going to be a challenge, there's no doubt. There's a point where we don't have a lot of subs. And so we're going to be able to do what we can and move from there and, and look at each situation individually. So I talked about buses, fifty students are allowed, or fifty individuals, so that includes the bus drivers and the monitor if they're on there. Certainly, the recommendation and requirement would be assigned seating so they know where they're going and they stay on those same seats and then get them to school safely. But we have routes that, you know, we have some, on some days, there's certainly about fifty, that's going to be a challenge for us. I mean, that's not been the case before, so we're going to have to do that within the requirements that we're allowing. Face shields, that was one, they were allowed for a very short time. The guidance came out on the twenty-third, I was part of the state board initiative or webinar on the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, and we talked, they talked a lot about face shields and that being optional. I think on the thirtieth, I, Department of Health came through and said that's not an acceptable face covering. So face shields are not, as it currently stands, considered to be an appropriate face covering in schools. Staff, does this mean we won't have science labs since those are done in groups? I mean, we have some specific questions that we're going to have to certainly look through and be able to do. Family and super science is another area. Can we do some of those areas? And we're going to have to really sit down with the teachers and figure out what we can do and we can do safely. And we know that's a challenge for everyone and it certainly potentially impacts our kids. So try to do as much as we can and knowing that, you know, we're going to go from there. Would Freckle be our remote learning? That was from one of our teachers, so yes, it will. If we go to that phase, we need to make sure all of our families and kiddos are ready and able to log on to that and using that throughout the year. So if we get that, that last minute call, be able to do that, we're going to be able to do, move to that phase. The remote learning phase a little, hopefully, smoother than we were last year. Full day, and like I said, right now, we're certainly trying to do everything that we can do to maintain a normal schedule. And again, we need your help. I mean, this is one... This is one that, you know, we, this is a challenge for us, we know that. You know, we're not, there's not one of us that says, man, I love wearing a mask, I love, you know, the social distancing piece. It's not, that's not the case. We've got to do what we're required to do, we've got to do what we're, what we hope keeps all of our kids and staff safe. But like I said, fifty students per bus is a challenge. Can you help us with that one? Can you transport your students to, to help us reduce those numbers? We, we would certainly appreciate that. We will be sending a survey out, like I said, that kind of talks about the remote learning option, if you're, if you're interested in that, and also with transportation. If you're a bus rider and you're going to say, yeah, we can, we can transport, then we, we would, we certainly want to know that as soon as we can so we can plan accordingly for our start of school. And then a supervision, you know, like I said, we have students in multiple locations and, and that's going to be a challenge for us. So if there's a few hours in your day that you're able to work, we would love to have that help and certainly make, you know, a little bit of money. We don't pay in time, obviously, but to be able to help and be in the schools and to be able to do that, we're going to need that as well. So that is kind of where we are. Timeline, as I kind of talked about, today is the sixteenth. We're really asking the board to, today, tonight, give us that five-day week schedule. So that's kind of that weekly schedule. The next board meeting is the twenty-eighth, where we'll really talk about what does our day look like? And then our return to school plan, which has all those specifics, will be approved by the board. First week of school, we're, we're asking a little bit of a change on that as well. One of our best and biggest nights is back to school night. Obviously, we can't have the number of families and students and everyone in the buildings the way we have. So that week, we've adjusted that, we would like to do teachers institute on Monday. Normally, we do two days of teachers institute, one is kind of the district level, one is kind of, one is more building-based. This year, we're, we're just going to do one day, which will be more building-based. We can't get all of our staff in this location to follow the guidelines anyway, so that allows us to do that. And then Tuesday night, we have that back to school night. But we're going to really stay at that, so we have Tuesday night, we have it one evening. But then we also are going to have two days that our teachers will be really working on trying to make that contact with their families and inviting our kids and their families in. So it'll be by appointment, and so it'll limit our teachers', you know, exposure all at once and to give us a little bit of a time to hopefully clean things, we're doing things, write things out. But we know our kids need to see their classrooms, they need to meet their teachers, so we're, we're trying to make that as best, as possible as best we can. So that is a little bit different, we're going to make that request. And then that changes, we change our first day of school, right now on the calendar it's the twelfth. We requested the, the board approve that to, to make that the thirteenth. So students would have their first full day on the thirteenth, which is Thursday and then Friday. And then the last one, which is one that we don't really have a choice on, we don't have a choice on this one either, but November third, law has been passed that that is a no-school day. So that is the state national election day, we cannot hold any form of school on that day now. I don't know if this will be something that we'll continue on, but certainly for this year, we can't do, and we even ask, can we do remote learning that day and use it as that? But we cannot. So it will be no school, Tuesday, November the third. There are some schools across the state, obviously, there are plenty of places, and that's always been a challenge, also it used to be, not anymore, which is, which is beneficial for kids and keep that separation, but that's not an option anymore for us. So that's the other part of the calendar that we've asked the board to approve. Really, I think that is all. Yeah, that is all I have at this point. It's kind of, I'm going to change on microphones. And like I said, there were many, many questions that were submitted, probably between teachers and parents, between the surveys and the emails that I've gotten the last week, hundreds probably. Most, I mean, they, a lot of them fit into those categories. Any of them don't, then, you know, we'll continue to work on, really, the twenty-eighth. I'm hoping that we can answer any of those questions, we'll share that document as soon as we can, but be able to give that information and continue to, to work with what we have as requirements at this point and hope they don't change on us anytime soon. So that's all I've got for us right now.
Take the judge. All right, so the next up would be the citizen agenda. This will be the opportunity for community and staff to do the things.
Yeah, they're viewing only online, so they, anyone, any of it that were submitted, we kind of consolidated those, really tried to hit as many as I could. And really, a lot of them are pretty specific at this point, so it's, once we get that plan in place, you know, we kind of share that and then kind of go to the next round from there.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the, the accident then. First up would be the consider approval of the district's weekly, weekly schedule for the twenty forty-one school year under Phase Four of Restored Elementary State. Get a motion, please? Second? Any discussions, questions, comments, concerns?
Obviously, at this point, it's that five days that we're, we're trying to make work to, like I said, our goal is to have that as a normal schedule. That, if that changes, we'll ask that on the twenty-eighth. So our parents say it's lunchtime and they're like, oh, the parent and principals are trying to make that a doable situation for us.
And if our statement's that to Phase Three, we're our section statement, then we revert to remote learning?
We do. Right. Yeah, so really, to that point, we're ten people, I mean, it's, you know, we would go remote and that's where we get those pieces in place and hopefully make a better transition than we did and we need to move on, so.
I know we've had some teachers step aside in potential consideration for, how has the teachers' reactions been in the meetings and talkings with them? And I know virtual option wasn't one of the options that they were allowed or that they, that they were asked on the survey. How have they, in your talks with the teachers, I guess, how have they?
Yeah, I mean, I think our teachers, you know, I think, you know, a lot of the comments were on, I think we all know that we need to be back. And I don't think, I mean, teachers didn't go into education to go remote, I mean, none of us have any formal training in doing that. So I think all of our teachers would say, we know we want to be with the kids, we want to be back. The unfortunate thing is no one wants to do it under all the requirements, but I, but that's, those are the cards we're dealt. And I think, you know, that comment that started off is, they're, they're concerned, they're a little nervous about, you know, if, if you said, we talked about, you know, the subs, you know, most of our subs are retired teachers and they're in that group that's, that's really more at risk than our regular teachers. And to say, would you like to come in and work every day with potentially kids that we don't know if they are caregivers or not, is, is scary for, it's scary for many. I mean, it really is. So I think our, our teachers are, we have great teachers, we want to do what's best for kids and want to, and know they want to be here, but this, this is scary, it is.
I think, yeah, in my discussion, we're talking about teachers just kind of reaching out with baseball and everything like that, kind of impression that they get they wanted to be back, you know, but they, they are the, yeah.
Yeah, there's no doubt.
And she had, are the teachers going to wear a mask or are they going to wear a shield?
They're going, I mean, as the requirements are currently, they're required to wear a mask as well.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the, the unfortunate part of that is, you know, you think about our younger kids and some of our kids, I mean, how do you, how do you do a speech lesson, lesson when the student can't see your mouth? I mean, there's a point where, you know, we're going to have to, I think the state has got to be able to say, this is ridiculous. I mean, really.
I thought at one point they were going back to it.
They did. Their original, the original information that was out there, the shields were going to be allowable as a face covering. were going to be allowable as a face covering. That changed within the Department of Health, I, I'm not sure that, you know, the state or the Department of Health are on the same page, because I think honestly, I, you know, I, I'm not sure, I don't know, part of that to say is one, adequate as a face shield is, you know, beneficial as a mask, I don't know that part. But from the education part, I can certainly say, our teachers would have been much happier wearing a shield if they could see faces, and our students would be too, I think, I don't think there's any doubt about that. That's not where we are right now, and, and that's not something that the decision we made, so it's.
Well, they can't put the shield in their mouth.
No, no, I mean, I'd be really excited, it's, it's a challenge.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, Chris?
So the change on the calendar is just what you mentioned, the first several days of school and November third? Okay, otherwise, there were no other changes.
All right, hearing more, Mike, take over. Brent?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Sarah?
Aye.
Mark Burge?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Marcia?
Aye.
And, uh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, consider approval of the amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one IBC district calendar. Okay, have a motion, please?
So.
Any discussions, um, questions?
The only thing, I, there is one line I changed, we are not doing because of capacity, we're not doing purely a county institute, that's traditionally been the first, it's the Friday before Labor Day, but we are going to maintain that as an institute day with the belief that our teachers, that's about two weeks in, that we're probably gonna have more than enough to kind of help our teachers and try to go through where we are at that point. So will we still institute day, just not doing the calendar, that's kind of why it's not, not occurring.
All right, so hearing none, Mike, take over, please? Sarah?
Aye.
Marcia?
Aye.
Mike Burge?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
All clear. All right, thank you. Uh, next up, a personal report, Dr. Allison.
Personal report for this evening, following resignations, Terry Square, our Keather South Elementary School, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Me Wilmer, second grade teacher at Mossville Elementary School, effective July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Well, as Lee Turner, their professional tour about the elementary center, effective July fifteenth, twenty twenty. The following personnel contracts, Caitlin Fix, mindfulness classroom teacher at IBC High School for twenty twenty-one. Jacqueline Ray, family and consumer science teacher at IBC High School for twenty twenty-one. Fern Angelo, third grade teacher at South Elementary School for twenty twenty-one. Heather Byrne, second grade teacher at Mossville for twenty twenty-one. And Shaila Forman, RTI and the Vincennes, such a local elementary school for twenty twenty-one.
I'll move and approve the personnel report. Second, please?
Second.
Any discussions or questions, concerns?
I have one comment, you know, as, as mentioned before, I would say that Mr. Stager's obviously very much missed, my, my kids love, and as a, as an art teacher, and, you know, my kids love art, so he was, he was a great instructor, very person to have there, just a true class act, something we definitely need next.
In according to his letter, we did a lot of questions?
Absolutely.
Yep.
And he was our first, one of our first exemplary educators of the year, when he first started that program.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, now, Mike, take over, please? Mike Burge?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
And Sarah?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, let's just go ahead and reverse this, uh, second chance for public input?
Please. Okay, so I noticed in your PowerPoint, you skipped, I mean, I mean, a C E C teacher. In the PowerPoint, you skipped over the temperature bullet, so a lot of us were wondering how that's gonna go, and how many times a day, or when, or how we're gonna check off everyone.
Well, and, yes, this is one of, you know, we're obviously, Mr. Buzzman had one demonstration today, checking the temperature, there's a certification piece that's allowable for parents, and so we certainly would encourage our parents every day to look and, and kind of see about that, but we know that it makes our teachers, you know, a little concerned when they are with the kids in the rooms, those temperatures. So it's, it's something that we are looking at, trying to do as efficient, efficiently as we can. I mean, it's that piece of, how do you get all of the C E C kids into the building with, you know, as little time as is required. So it's gonna be a piece that we, we continue to deal with, that was part of our discussion yesterday, with the transition team, Mr. Gurry and Mr. Wood, our C E A leadership were part in that conversation, and it will be definitely part of what we do. How we do it, it may be, you know, an app system, it may be electronic, we're working through scanner remains, we're looking at all options and really it's kind of that, what's the, the cost benefit, and kind of how do we do it, who wants the best system? So we will, I can't tell you my words, but. I will say that piece, the one that is consistent, you see in all of that information, is that one hundred point four becomes that magical number. And the other part that, you know, we've kind of changed, we will change in the district because, but there was a point when that fever was a twenty-four hour, and now that becomes a seventy-two hour requirement, and, you know, kind of on the line from there. So there are definitely pieces that, that's gonna be different, and we know that that's something we gotta, you know, be very proud of.
Anybody else? All right, um, other items?
Of course, I was sitting at the computer trying to research a lot of this, and I, I came across this Dr. Scott Atlas, who is a neuro radiologist, senior fellow at the Hoover Institute at Stanford University, and he made me feel better about our decision of going, going five days under Phase Four, because he did say that children have the lower risk of getting COVID, even less than influenza, which surprised me. And he also said that children spreading disease to adults is at a low risk, and he cited Sweden, Canada, Switzerland, and Netherlands with that data. And just, he, and he also talked about the massive harm of not having kids in school, and as far as their social engagement, their, their conflict resolution, their, their just ability to be out, and so I feel very good about this decision. And I would urge parents and, and other board members to, he, he's done several interviews, his name again is Dr. Scott Atlas, and, you know, I wrote everything down, but it's too extensive, just, it, it, it just makes me feel better about educating our kids.
Yeah, I will send you those links, I remember that we have a kind of research page on our website, try to gather some of those things around, and those of American Pediatrics.
Yes, I also, you know, there's an article on American P D, uh, American Academy of P D doctors, and that also was.
Yeah, and we're doing exactly what they recommended.
Yes, they're recommending getting our kids back in school.
But even the three foot social distance in Phase Four, so.
I have a question. Scotty Martin is my name, and I'm just wondering, will you send out a survey to parents who would like to help contribute in the school setting? So like, I could want to even put on a survey that, you know, if I was in a classroom with my kids or neighboring classroom, you know, to either be a gopher, help sanitize, to, instead of kids going home always to run errands, maybe an adult that's kind of stationed, but I also want a teacher in preschool setting, so, and I've been background checked a million times, so technically I could be a sociative teacher. I don't like doing that because of my anxiety, but if I was in a classroom that's consistent to me and the kids, it would no longer be an anxiety situation, so it's kind of something that they found.
Yeah, absolutely, and we, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's a survey necessarily, but we will definitely send it out to our parents, and, and it'll be part of that, that transportation piece to say, you know, we need, we need help, and so if you have that ability, you know, I'm sure Mr. Stella is probably watching from home, who probably has your name on the.
Yeah, I've got four kids in Mossville right now, so I have to go four times for my kids.
Yep, so, yeah, we will definitely reach out to our parents, and we, I appreciate the, the offer, because it's something we need, we're, we're all just together.
Yeah, I need my kids at school. Like, I have my kids at school.
Anybody else? As always, thank you to you and your staff, Dr. Allison, I think, like we always say, it's, it's been unprecedented what's going on, but you guys have done wonders and keep passing on all the super, you know, principles that we appreciated, all the hard work.
No, it's, it's one that, unfortunately, our principals, it's not a model, it's one where we, they've worked hard and continue to do, and that's, you know, running the gun again, trying to get this, playing pieces together, so, you know, we, we've, we've got a long way to go, and we're trying, certainly trying to do it.
And Adam, thank you for assisting a lot, too. Anybody else? All right, so hearing nothing else, we'll adjourn this meeting, our next meeting will be Tuesday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty, six thirty, to IBC High School library. Thanks, guys.